Attention, we'll go ahead and get our meeting called to order. It is good to see all of you on this rainy Monday afternoon on President's Day. I hope you all had a great Valentine's Day and keep it stopped by your house and shared some love. So, at this point in our agenda, I'd like to call on our friend Elder Denise Brown with Joy Temple Church. Ms. Brown, if you'd like to just come up to the podium here and we'll turn it over to you for a prayer and a small invocation. Thank you so much for being with us tonight.
You're welcome. Thank you for inviting me. Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for this day and how you've blessed us. We thank you for life, health, and strength. We thank you for Mayor Smith and the City Council members. We pray your strength over them now. We pray protection over them now and everyone represented in this building today. We pray their strength now. Continue to meet every need, oh God, and we lift up this agenda to you now. We pray for your wisdom to guide them in what they need to do for the betterment of this city and the peoples. We thank you now for all that you've done and all that you're about to do for the greater good of the City of Tifton. We pray that you be glorified in what they do, in your son Jesus' name. Thank God, amen.
Amen.
And amen.
Thank you. Thank you so much. If you all will please stand and place the flag, then we'll have our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you again, Elder Brown. We appreciate you being here with us tonight. Thank you. I do want to point out that we do have agendas that are on the podium here. If you'd like to, anyone would like to grab one and kind of follow along with us. Before we actually get started with the rest of our agenda, the approval of the agenda and the minutes and move forward with public comments, I'd like to call on Chief Hyman, our police chief. I think you have someone you'd like to introduce to us this evening, Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for giving me a minute to introduce my new partner, Major Chris Griffin. I hope you, you've had a chance to view his swearing-in ceremony. That is playing on the City Channel and you might have got to see it on Facebook Live. Major Griffin has 29 years of law enforcement experience that ranged from being a radio dispatcher to chief investigator and now assistant chief. During his time in Adel, he has held the rank of corporal, sergeant, lieutenant, and captain. Last week was his first week on the job with us. He jumped in, started working, didn't sit around waiting on the instructions. He also got involved with things that were going on and things that I was doing and other things going on in the department. I'd be remiss if I didn't say again that the men and women of Tifton Police Department have accomplished a lot this year. They've worked hard for our community and stayed true to our citizens through all criticism of police officers in the media. I appreciate their commitment as individuals and as a department to protect and serve this community we love. I know that our work as protectors and community partners isn't finished and we have more to accomplish. Mayor and Council, we have a new family member stepping in and stepping up to the challenge of making our department, our city better and our community safer and a great place to live and work and to raise families. I give you Major Chris Griffin.
Thank you. Chris, we are so excited to have you as part of our team. I don't have to tell you about how much we think of our, our police chief and our police department. These, these men and women are just second to none in our book and we're so proud to have you as part. Would you like to share a few words with us or any comments you'd like to say?
First of all, thank you all for having me. I appreciate the time and opportunity and I promise you I'm gonna work hard. I'm gonna give it my all. Only thing I can say about the friendly city is it's kind of like visiting a church. Everywhere I go, it's like, I'm, I'm new, so I don't know everyone, but they don't mind coming up to me either shaking my hand or hugging me. I know it's pandemic, but, but there were some hookers there and I, and I just appreciate that. I appreciate the welcome that I'm, I'm receiving through the City of Tifton. Thank you all.
Well, like I said, we're very proud to have you as part of the team. Anything that we can do to make your job easier, you just let us know. Like I said, we just have the utmost appreciation and respect for our police department. And so you've joined a fine group of people and we're very happy to have you with us. Any council members have any comments or anything you'd like to share?
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, gentlemen, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. And I always have to brag on this because you've done such a good job of getting the information out to us in a timely manner and getting that out to all the media that needs to receive it. So, you received that last week. Is there a motion to approve?
Mayor, I'd like to add one item.
Okay.
The mask ordinance is coming up.
Okay.
And we need to discuss that. We could put it wherever.
I think Pete was gonna share some information with us. Maybe we just put it towards the end of the agenda?
We'll put it at number, before other, after ordinances, before other business or something? Number nine? Yeah.
All right, so we have, so you're making the motion with that addition to be approved?
Yes.
Okay. So adding the mask ordinance discussion to the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion, any other changes we need to make? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, also in your packet was the minutes, trying to get by here. Also in your packet were the minutes from our last meeting and that would be January the 11th. That was our workshop where we discussed all of the items that we'll be voting on this evening. So I'll take a motion concerning the submission of those minutes.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Wes. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, the next item is our consent, oh, you know what, I skipped right over, skip public comments, I'm sorry. Just roll along here. Bob Cartwright, I think you want, did you want to speak, Mr. Cartwright? Did you want to address the City Council tonight?
It's time.
It's time.
I care about the fire alarm issues.
Okay, yeah, if you'll just come up to the podium here, just state your name and address for the record and our city clerk will get that and then we're all ears.
Okay, Bob Cartwright, 1813 Red Fox Trail, Tifton, Georgia, 31793. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
This muffled mask, I'm sorry. I'll try to be brief. I've written out a couple of pages here to speak about the fire alarm issue that came up in the paper. And as a retired retailer, I, I had some warm thoughts about those cold nights at 3:00 in the morning going to see those, see the fire department show up with hook and ladder and everything else out there. It was embarrassing and I apologize to the lieutenant, I wish I could think of his name, but he and I became very close friends over the years at 3:00 in the morning. But thank you for allowing me to speak. The fire department and the police department have always answered the alarms quickly, professionally, and I mean, you couldn't ask for a better group. You really couldn't. But this issue about the fines, I'm not too, too keen on fines, but I just wonder if, you know, if we've looked at it real close. And maybe you have. I don't know what all's been going on, you know, as far as questions and answers and investigation about this or that. And every business knows that overtime is terrible and so is loss in productivity. But usually, you know, a body like this can get together and find out the, what the problems are and get together and kind of fix them. I want to share just a couple of times that I can recall, which my memory's getting thinner and thinner every day, but like my hair. But there was a several, I guess I've answered over 100 fire alarms in about 42 years, but luckily I don't have to do that anymore. But many of them were stemmed around new store openings or remodels or test results. You know, we'd have our tech show up and do testing of the system and lo and behold, the next night we'd have a fire alarm or that evening. I've been told it's because they flow that valve and the water comes out and then when the water settles back in, it triggers, triggers the alarm in the middle of the night. And all of you probably know how the sprinkler system thing works. I don't see one in here, but I'm sure there is. Once the fire goes off, it burns off the tip of that sprinkler and here comes the water. And the water flows through this switch and sounds the alarm. It says you've got a problem, that, you know, the fire, there's a fire somewhere. And sometimes there's not, but many times there is. But I've only had one real fire in the hundred I've answered. And it was put out with a fire extinguisher on the wall, some 14-year-old girl. She attended a class that the fireman held at school and she learned how to operate the thing. And she put the fire out for me. I was home, I didn't even know about it at the time. But then the other category that these alarms fall in, I would classify that as, well, I'm not sure really, but in this particular case, there was a, we had so many false alarms, we called in an engineer one time. And he worked on it and replaced flow switches, I don't know what all, several parts. And come to find out, there was people working on the line out under the parking lot. And over a period of time, it took, took time to do that. And somehow it was negatively affecting the water flow of the system, therefore sending that alarm off. And which was no fault of the retailer or the fire department or anybody, it's just one of those things. But it cost a lot of time and money and effort on everybody's part. So all I'm suggesting is that not all false alarms are the fault of the retailer or whoever it may be. There are other circumstances involved. That's all I'm asking you to do is to look at, look at everything to see if, to see if the problem can be solved other than the word fine. And the word fine to me is a little harsh, it's a little heavy. You know, you get fined going down the road speeding, you don't like that. But, you know, maybe a fee would be a better term, but I'm not suggesting you charge anything. Because I don't think small business, big business, whoever can afford fines, fees, or anything else. I think, I think if there's a way to look at it, you probably could solve it without any fines or fees or anything else. Now, when I would approach a problem like this, I'd have to investigate and maybe you already have, I don't know. You know, are these things happening at night only? Are they happening in the daytime only? What percent of this versus that? What kind of resources are we using and when? When is the overtime being accumulated? Is it something we can manage through scheduling? Maybe we've got all of our resources in the daytime when in fact it's all happening at night. Most of all, my false alarms are at night, but that's, that's another story. So hopefully you can manage this problem without hindering business growth. I would hope so. And like I said, I don't have a dog in this fight anymore. It doesn't bother me one way or the other. I just read the paper and felt that people need a fair shake on fines. I don't know how you could investigate all that that goes on with that and then fine somebody for it and it not be their fault. I guess that's what I'm, what I'm thinking. And then on the other hand, the fire department, they, they don't need to be using their resources, get all, you know, suited up and prepare and work and then there's nothing going on with that. So when they, when they leave for a fire, they need to know it's a fire because they're ready. And to send them through that is not necessary, it's just not. So I don't know what, what the middle road is, but I'm sure you'll find it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cartwright. Any comments from the council or questions to Mr. Cartwright?
No, I would just comment, I spoke to the mayor about this. I don't like the word fine either. If, if, in fact, we do something, I treat it more as a cost reimbursement to the city because of the cost and you'll hear if you say how many times the business has to correct a problem. These are repeat things. These are, this is not have one, this is repeat. And so I don't, it's not a fine versus, it costs the city a good bit of money and it's to reimburse or in our case, I think the cases we'll point out, are cases that the business didn't take care of. It's the same thing over and over and over again and that's the ones we're trying to direct the, the attention to. But no, it's not, a fine, I don't like that fine either.
Well, have those things I brought up been looked at? Are the resources being used all the same time? Are they varying in time? Why is it, why is, why is the overtime necessary period, you know? Why, why, let's start with that. Is, is half of your runs abnormal? I don't know. In other words, what does Thomas do? Do they have half their runs abnormal or they have none or other cities?
And the chief would give us, would give us that, but it is at night and there's a certain time that then causes overtime depending on the time of night that it is. I mean, we man the station 24/7, but if they get called out at a certain time, then wage and hour says you have to pay them so many hours kind of thing. So that's, that's the ones we're trying to, we're trying to stop these repeat.
If their schedule is midnight to 5:00 AM, that's their schedule, wage and hour wouldn't have anything to do with that.
Well, I, I mean, I, I would have to defer to the chief and we'll have a discussion about it, about, you know, when it becomes overtime, when it's not.
There you go.
And, and it's a safety thing for me as well. Anytime, as you know, the fire department gets called out, they're at risk, residents are at risk, anybody on the road is at risk.
That's a very bad report.
And, and that's number one to me. And if it's something that continues to happen, I think it's in here four times or three or four times, if you haven't corrected a problem after the, the same problem, three or four times, something, I mean, there, there, something gotta happen. Somebody's gotta get some attention somewhere and let's not put these guys at risk.
Given the, unless there's a change or anything that, that comes through voting on this this evening, the fire chief has the discretion to work with that business owner, even if it's beyond the three or four times that would reference the ordinance. So, so if it's, you know, if there's, if it's a faulty, you know, something that the alarm system maybe is working on and they have, our fire chief would be given the discretion to work with that business owner. Because we don't want to, the last thing I think anybody would want to do is to create a hardship, any more hardship for our businesses. And we've been very, very careful to try to work with them through all this pandemic and the economy and everything that's going on.
What I want you to find too is when somebody reacts to somebody, they may react to something else. For instance, if I was a small business owner and had $300,000, $400,000 in inventory, and I'd be a small business owner and was getting penalized for my fire alarms, I would just take me out some insurance on my, my product and tell my landlord, good luck. And that he can replace the building when it burns if he wants to. So I mean, who do you go after in this case? The landlord that owns the building or the people that's renting it? In most cases, they're renting these buildings or leasing them from somebody, probably some of you. So, you know, I guess what I saw about the thing, it's just hard to nail down exactly what, what the fire alarm problem is. Now, I think you hit on the right thing. If you had a person in your department where you could even charge these people for an engineer to go, to go fix this thing once and for all, I think would be a great, great thing to do and forget fining everybody that way or trying to levy some sort of penalty when in fact it may not have been their fault the first four times, but second, you know, I, I just see this thing being juggled around where it's not manageable.
Right.
And to make it manageable, I think we have to go to the source and fix the problem and not try to fine the problem.
Right.
I don't know the answer to that, I'm not an engineer, but it'd be worth somebody's money to hire one, to go to these places and solve $15,000 would be pretty good.
Oh, yeah.
I agree with you on that.
Yes, absolutely.
Of my hard-earned money.
Thank you so much for being here with us this evening, Mr. Cartwright. We do appreciate that. Right. Well, we appreciate you being with us and sharing your thoughts with us this evening. Okay, the next item is our consent agenda. And we can take these items numbers one through four together or if there's any in particular item under the consent agenda, consent agenda, we can pull that out and discuss it further if you'd like to. So I'll leave that up to you all to make the motion on how you'd like to move forward on consent agenda.
I move we approve all four.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion for items one through four. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on any of those four items? All those in favor, please, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, now we are at the false alarm ordinance. So, so can you, is there any updated information or chief, any updated information that you want to, to share with us this evening?
Numbers again, I just, I wanted to start by saying that this is not a new ordinance. This was on the books and it really was outdated. So I asked chief to look at that. He did scrub that, look at other communities. And then we actually statistically looked at the number of calls. So we did a six-month snapshot and in those six months, there was 166 or 160, give or take, of calls for false alarms, which we respond. And Mr. Cartwright, we, when we, we respond, I mean, there's, there's trucks that have to roll and the chief is looking at that and I think you realize that. But out of those 100, let's say 160, 88 were after hours, so at, during the evening times. And again, out of those 88, if we had this ordinance in place, only four would have been subject to a first-time charge. So it's not something that hopefully is not going to happen very often. But what we need to do is make sure when, again, via the ordinance and robs from a legal side, we need to make sure we're able to enforce this. So fine, fee, reimbursement, whatever it is, we need to make sure that we're able to do that. But all in all, this is something that we, we really need to put into place because of the numbers. And again, I hope the chief could use discretion that we need to work with businesses and not to focus on just, you know, for monies. But this is considerable money when, when you're talking about overtime. And yes, at a 48-hour shift, the wage and earnings law from, from the Federals actually says no difference. So it's instead of eight hours, they're on 48 hours. So we do have to pay overtime and we have to do, follow those laws just like it was, you know, Monday through Friday. So it's a delicate balance, but in the, in the wee hours of the morning, they're subject and that's the way the, the law states that we'd have to pay overtime. So again, it's a balancing act, chief. Did I miss anything?
I mean, that's fine.
But again, this is not something new. We just, we needed to tailor it a little more to the fire because of the exorbitant cost that, what could happen in the future. So that's all this is.
Okay. And we left the, I just want to make sure I'm reading this properly with what's in our packet. There was no change to those fees then?
I didn't. I heard, I looked back over the comments and again, I tried to, somewhere in the middle and your discretion, if you want to change it, you certainly can. But it's, you know, after four, it's, you know, it's not covering costs, but it's somewhere in the middle. And I think we could, we could really work with, you know, the first three on fixing the problems, making sure we work with the companies, alarm companies or business owners or retail. Again, we're not trying to, you know, hunt them down. We're just trying to educate them and to get their equipment working correctly.
The fire inspector will go to the business.
Mr. Cartwright, after ever false alarm and see what it is. He'll come back and tell me, you know, what it was or whether it's the, you know, like what you said, whether it's a water problem or it's an electrical problem or if it's an alarm problem. Your alarm, you know, you'll notify your alarm company and tell them what's going on. They'll come look at it and fix it. And then after, after all this is done, I'm gonna look at it and it's, like I said, it's under my discretion of what we do. And it's like I said in the, in the workshop, I hope we don't write one ticket. That's not what we want to do. That's not what this is about. What this is about is, is fixing the fire alarms. 166 false alarms, you know, 80-something of them is in overtime. The other 80-something of them is during the daytime, regardless if it's day or night, we come in. And that's a big liability. It's a big liability on us and also it's a big liability on the owner or the occupant of the building. You continue to run false alarms and something happens, we get in a wreck, there's liability issues there. So what we're trying to do is help everybody fix this problem. And like I said, I hope we don't have to do any reimbursements or fees or whatever. That's, that's not what this is about. It's just about fixing the problem, hopefully.
And I might add, and, you know, there again, that, you know, safety is, y'all know, safety's my thing. Every time the chief and the fireman go out, there is a risk. There's a risk for them as they're trying to speed to a fire and there's a risk to every intersection they go through to, you know, the residents and whatever. And, you know, to do the same thing, just imagine in the fourth time it happened, somebody gets killed because we've run into somebody and it's the fourth time for the same darn thing that they've been trying to fix? That's terrible. I mean, that, that's absolutely terrible. So I, I think fourth, fourth is giving way more leeway, but in the interest of, it seemed to be the consensus, I'll go along with it. But at the end of the day, let's keep the fire trucks and the firemen at the firehouse for everything except a fire. And however we can minimize those trips, we're better off.
So again, I want to make sure I'm, I'm clear on what I'm reading here. With our fire department responses, fourth alarm, the fourth false alarm is $2.50. Each false alarm after those fourth is $1,000. And then for the false alarm causing the police department response, it's $2.50. But is that first response or is that fourth response? It doesn't say in our ordinance. Okay. It's not worded that way. That's why I want to make sure.
It's the fourth one for that as well.
And then after the fourth, it's $1,000 for police?
The cost to the fire department's greater than the cost to send a police car. So I, I thought we were thinking about just $2.50 for any false alarm after four.
Okay, it just, it just doesn't say after the fourth false.
Right, I'm, I'm getting ready.
The confusion that that's the first alarm. In my opinion, it's what I said at the workshop, I feel like $1,000 is too high. I understand the safety, I understand the, the cost associated with wage and hour. I, I truly understand all that, but I just feel like $1,000 is, is excessive. And like, you know, I'd have to trust that, you know, we'll not get to that point. But I just feel like that number is too excessive. I support the ordinance completely, but I cannot support $1,000. So. Sure.
Yeah, there won't be nothing to it. It won't be a, a charge of an alarm. You know what I'm saying? We're gonna use discretion and check everything so we know flowing hydrants and all that can cause a problem. So they won't be, that won't be a one-time offense for them.
Who's gonna regulate that?
I will.
Yeah, okay. Okay, well, what jurisdiction is it wrong somewhere? And chief, that's still out of discussion.
Damn.
Yeah, so, I don't know if the, if the, I don't know what the other council members feel about the fees or the fines or whatever we want to call it on the $1,000.
It's your discretion. We go, there's $1,500 of overtime costs. Again, you know, we went over $15,000 this past year in overtime. So again, we're, we're willing to work. It's your discretion. So the increment seems to be good. Is there, you have a suggestion of another fee or another?
I would.
You've cut it in half?
I, I just, you know, for the fourth false alarm, it's $2.50 and then it's $2.50 from that point on, in my opinion. But that's, that's just, that $1,000 just seems excessive.
Are we trying to get some action on it? I mean, are we trying to get them to do something about this? And somewhere when you get to that fifth and sixth time?
Like the sixth, sixth call or something like that, just have them come in front of council and like we do anything else. Well, I guess the, the intentions of the, of the ordinance, in my understanding, is business owners who are purposely negligent of not fixing the issue. Like if they're well, if they're understood and known and they are just refusing to fix it for whatever reason, that is the purpose or the intent of it, not accidents by any means. We don't ever want to find any of our small business owners for, for purposes, like, hey, listen, if they come in and say it's a faulty sensor on Monday and then on Tuesday it's a sensor, on Wednesday it's a sensor, on Thursday it's a sensor, but you're saying, hey, listen, here's where I got the work order to get this fixed. We're trying to get it fixed. I think chief, in that instance, would say, hey, listen, you're trying to get it worked out. You know, let's go from there and if you need the assistance from your alarm company, we'll be more than happy to help you. I don't think that we're here to say, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna balance the budget for the City of Tifton on these fire alarms. That's definitely not the issue. I think it's more of our small business owners who are purposely just saying, I'm not gonna fix it, it is what it is. Or hey, that ain't my problem, I'm not gonna fix it, that's the building or whatever that I'm leasing. You know, things like that. Then we, we get the kind Then we get the conversation in with the landlord and tenant and all that stuff. And we're going to work with our folks. We're not just going to sit out there and throw tickets at people. Right. I think it'd be a code violation, wouldn't it?
Yeah, we don't. And the only thing I'll offer, Council, is just on your levels, increments, is that sometimes it's worth just paying the $250 and not having to deal with it over and over and over. So I think to the councilman folks' point, you have to, via ordinance, if you want to enforce it, this is the way to do it. And even if you take, you know, half to the $1,000 and put it at 500, at least it's escalating at that particular time. So again, we're not going to see many go past, you know, four or five, not that what statistics show. So again, this is something that we're going to use it as a tool for not only safety, but for making sure the businesses have operating equipment. So.
This would be a code violation. So the enforcement officer would be the code?
Fire inspector.
Fire inspector, and he has a right to cite?
Well, I don't know. I mean, he could cite. We don't, it's not normally something that we do as far as monetary. But if it's a violation, then he'll sure be going to take that.
Yeah, we, we talked mainly about fire alarms, and me and Chief have been talking about it a couple of times. This thing is also on the police side, too. Friday night, one of my officers called me, a lieutenant did, and said, Chief, can you check on this business? We've been here 66 times this year, and it ain't been fixed yet. So I called him today, and we spent about 30 minutes together. And he got the alarm company down there and all that. So that'll be one that we got worked out without having to do that. But then you got some that, when you call, they'll say, did you, is it broken into? Or do you see anything? And then you, when you show, and then you tell them, no, you don't have any burglar anything. Well, I ain't coming to even see what it is. And then you go back to, I mentioned the other day, it's like the little boy that cried wolf because, you know, the alarm out here in the mall parking lot to that ATM, it went off several, several times. But the other night, somebody was actually trying to steal the alarm, you know? And then sometimes you wonder if that slowed down the response because of how many times it went off. So it, you know, listen, I just want to say, it's an issue on the police side, too. And it's just not Chief Bennett. And it seems like we're on him right there. But it's still, it's still over on our side, too. And the issue is still, it's alarms and it's false alarms. I don't know how much we charge them, but, you know, we just, it hasn't been.
Going back to that fourth offense, I mean, I just think the $1,000 is too much. I could live with 500. I don't know if the council would be acceptable at 500. I just, you know, I just.
There's still some questions. If there's still some questions, we could, you know, we'll put it off till next work session if you want to have more conversation.
I think fourth is too many. I think we're given the right to allow it at the fourth. That's why I'm saying I'm willing to, I'll go with the fourth if you'll go with the $1,000 on the fifth. Because I mean, I'd do something after the second or third if it's the exact same thing.
Mayor, Council. Pete's suggestion, I think, might be a good one. You know, I do have some, you know, some thoughts about, you know, enforceability, fines versus fees. Also, if somebody's being assessed a fee, what's their due process as far as being able to state their case, so to speak? So I'd like to look into that a little bit more. So if it's all right with y'all, we could maybe workshop this again, and then bring it back up next month, and we can take a little bit of a closer look at it.
Okay. Is there anybody?
Works for me.
Okay. All right, do you need a motion to that thing?
Yeah, let's, why don't we just postpone it to the, to a definite time before the next work session? Yes.
No move, we do that.
Okay, so we'll post, Jack has made the motion to postpone for the March workshop. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, thank you, and any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And if you will just share your thoughts and everything with Pete, I know you've got lots of notes and everything.
Again, it's, I don't want the chief, or both chiefs, thinking, you know, that this is something wrong with the departments because this is clearly something that we need to do.
That's why I said, you know, completely understand the need to do something. It's just, what is this something going to be and how's that going to be structured?
I understand. And this what usually happens, this is, you know, ordinances are on the books that are just outdated, and we bring them around because we need to. This is some of the good, healthy discussions so we get to where you're comfortable and it's right for the city.
I'd just make one more comment. You know, really, this is a negligence issue, not so much as what we call a strict liability issue. Fourth offense, boom. I mean, I think that we're, as Wes was saying, we're really looking for those folks that are negligently not taking care of their alarm systems. And I feel like maybe we can fashion something along those lines so we're getting those people, but yet not penalize the others.
There you go, okay. Okay, well, we'll, let's look at that, read the ordinance very closely, and just share with Rob or Pete any suggestions or ideas as it relates to the false alarms. All right, the next item under ordinances is the ordinance providing for home delivery of alcohol by authorized package retailers. And we did discuss that as well at the workshop. Any updates or any changes, any, Pete or Rob, that you need to add to that?
No, it's basically, as we discussed at the workshop, this is basically what state law now permits. And the ordinance as before, the council, really just relates to the ability of restaurants to do the same as retail package stores.
Okay. So that being said, is there a motion concerning this ordinance?
No move.
Thank you, is there a second? Thank you, Johnny. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, our next ordinance is relating to a rezoning for .85 acres located at 80 Oak Point Road. And we heard about that at our last meeting. And that zoning is going from general business to multi-residential. That was submitted by Todd Governor of Tifton Apartments. Unless there's any questions or anything concerning that, I'll take the motion.
No move.
On that rezoning, okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right.
We'll go into discussion.
Yeah, okay, so the motion is second, so discussion.
Yes, all right, so is there still contingent upon the annexation? Is that right? Is that what we talked about?
No, this is something different. That's a senior housing complex. This is just adding on to the.
This is adding to.
Oh, okay. I thought, okay, so this is not it?
No, that's the housing tax credits, but no, that's not.
Okay, I apologize.
Okay, all right, so any further discussion or questions? All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Thank you. All right, next item is an ordinance amending a section of our land development code, and that relates to the mobile food units. And we did also talk about that at our workshop. So I will open that up for a motion. You want a motion to approve?
Yep.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, this is where we made our change on our agenda. So Pete, I'll turn it over to you to talk about the mask ordinance, and then we'll go onto the financial report, board reports, and the other business.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Council, I believe Jessica sent out the latest COVID rates in Tiff County. And obviously, the numbers are continuing to decrease very good. So the current ordinance about masks will expire on February 20th. Is that correct, 20th?
We don't meet it, so I don't, that may be a Rob question if.
Okay, well, it's just, it was due. So I wanted to bring this to your attention. And you could see the cases per 100,000 are down to 78. Cases last, in the last two weeks, have been 32. So it continues on the downward trend, which is great. It doesn't mean that, you know, obviously, the community needs to keep the guard up. But I wanted to share this with you, and if you're wanting to take different action, you'll let us know then.
Basically, the, once it gets below 100, the governor said you can't have a mandate. So we're below that. So whether Rob have to tell us to end immediately because we're below 100, or does it just expire on its own? Don't know. But just, just as a point, just, just so we're aware, the facts, there were 793,000 cases of COVID in Georgia. There were 14,000 deaths. 14,000 deaths. When we were talking about this a month ago, that number was 10,000. That's 129 deaths per 100,000. Tiff County, there are 3,321 cases and 90 deaths. 90 people. That's 220 per 100,000. Almost double state average. When we enacted this mask mandate, we were over 700 cases per 100,000. Now we're below 100. The CDC still recommends as of today, and then says the reason cases are dropping is because of mask wearing, because of social distancing, because of washing your hands. They maintain that this is not the time to end mask mandates. We have no choice because the state doesn't have one. The president has asked for masks to be worn for 100 days. So I fully believe that the mask mandate, and I can't prove it, but I believe it, it's in anecdotal data and anecdotal just seeing that there are more people wearing masks in Tifton than were before. And because I think most people want to follow the law, they're not going to just ignore it.
Right, make a correction, Jack.
Yeah.
If you, if you don't meet the threshold, then the ordinance can't be enforced. It's not that you can't have the ordinance. You can only enforce it if you have reached that threshold.
Okay, well, I would say, and I committed, and the other two that go to it, to do something different if they'd like, to people that would call, because they, they had two issues with, one, when, you know, there was no date. And then we did put it 30 days. And then the others were, when does it actually end? And so I would say we won't extend it because we are down to the 70-something, and the governor's now eliminated this. But still believe that, you know, if you, if you want to still be safe and protect your neighbors, wear a mask. And so I think it was the right thing to have done. The numbers proved that out. And with that, I would just let it go.
Jack, I'll take back what you say. I think that we could, I mean, just keep the ordinance in place. But while it's under 100, we could continue, maybe use some CARES Act money to still get some material out. Talk about masks, use our Governor China, use our Facebook resources to say, hey, listen, guys, while our cases have finally hit under 100%, you know, we could still talk about the positives of wearing a mask, talk about the positives of social distancing and things of that nature, until, you know, I think I saw the other day, Tiff County had right out of 1,000-plus people vaccinated. You know, I mean, that's, you know, what, 1/40 of our population? You know, so we still got a little bit of ways to go. And I'm, you know, that's, I guess, in that 1A, 1B group. They haven't went to 2A.
It hasn't.
So, you know, we're still, you know, in that range or whatnot, but still, you know, I guess 1,000 people out of those two groups is probably, that's probably a high percentage. But, you know, I think education could still help the fight against this. And then just let, you know, February 20th is the expiration of it. I mean, if we renewed it or whatever until, you know, just to have it on case, and then once we get this thing built up, I mean, I could compromise with that. You know, I think, I think nobody knows if the education or if the mask mandates are the reason for our cases going down. Both sides of our argument could be right. So why can't we blend it, you know, and go from there?
So are you making the motion that we go ahead and extend it?
No, I'm saying continue it. We could, when's our next meeting? Oh, this is our February meeting.
It shall remain in effect for a period of 30 days unless extended or repealed. It'll, this will, this will expire on?
It'll expire on February 20th?
I believe that's correct.
I mean, you can, I mean, I think we can go ahead and start the educational aspect of it still. And then just let it phase itself out. And then in February or March, our March meeting, we see a new tick, we put it back online. We call it new business or whatever, or have an emergency meeting or whatever after that.
I would say since it's, and Johnny and y'all, probably you know me, y'all were the other two, that since it's dropped, the numbers have dropped like that, I'm okay with, you know, letting it go until, if the numbers go back over 100 and go back up, I will be making a motion again. Just say that. But since the threshold was kind of 100, and I think we just quietly, quietly let it end, and I believe people will still, those that are going to wear a mask are going to go wear a mask. Those that think they don't work, it doesn't matter what you do. But the numbers prove it out.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll reevaluate then at our March meeting? Is that what you're saying?
Let it expire, but we can always keep on with education.
Okay. All right, any other, any other questions concerning masks?
I didn't understand that. So are we going to repeal, or are we going to let it expire?
No, basically, we don't need to do anything.
Yeah, I was, but I'm just, I guess, asking or directing to say, hey, listen, why can't we continue the education aspect of it?
Yes, sir, okay.
You know, through our different avenues. Talk about the positives, that, hey, we're down to 100 cases, probably high to 650 at one time.
It was over 700.
700, so that's, that's very positive. That's good news. And then go from there.
Okay, go.
Okay. All right, any other questions concerning mask orders? All right, financial reports. Dana?
I've got to breathe. Let's start with the local option sales tax report. Our local option collections are really going very well. We're actually 9% higher than we should be at this time. So that's a good sign for the economy. The hotel motel collections, they were really higher in December. I mean, for November's collection, but in December, it went down a little bit. But we're still close to the 100,000, but not quite there. But I'm hoping this will stay steady and not drop back down. Maybe with all these good news, you know, less COVID cases, that this will continue to improve. Okay, your January?
Dana, excuse me, just a minute. Just so you know, on, back to local option sales tax, for the month of January, we collected $315,625. So that is quite an uptick. And if you look at the same thing that happened in November, the numbers continue to move an inch upward, which is great. On the hotel motel, it seems to be pretty much averaging out. The additional pennies are adding some monies. But again, hopefully, we're going to see some, some more activity at, just at $39,924 on regular collection. So with some hope, with, you know, this, we're coming into the third quarter. Hopefully, we're going to see some more activity on that.
Okay, your January statement, that we rehanded out, there's some calculation issues. So I've reprinted them and corrected them. But overall, joint funds doing great. We should be collecting the Georgia power franchise check this month, so that will help. And then next month, we'll have business license due. So that would be another great revenue source coming in. The water fund's doing great. We're on schedule for everything there, all the revenue. The sewer, same thing. Sewer's doing great for this time of year. The gas fund should be improving some. for this time of year, the gas fund should be improving some, especially last month, there was an increase, and this month, I'm sure there will be another increase because of the weather.
I think it's critical, here we are at the six month mark, just so you kind of gauge on where we are, if you'll look at the first page on expenditures by department, you can see our budget of 14,263,000 on the right hand side, on our budget, you see, year to date, we spent 7,791,000, so we have spent 55,000 of the budget, that is a good projection, and we are right in line to finish out the the year, right on target, which is a great sign, and then if you look at the water fund, same thing on the budget, 3,358,200, and so far on on the revenues, we collected 2.2, so we're we're above on on revenue collection, but we're a little behind on expenditures, which is not a bad thing, so if you slide right to the right, the year to date, we spent 1.2 million in the water fund. The sewer fund, again, it's it's a little opposite, so if you look at the expenditures on the sewer, the budget 4.1 million, year to date, we spent 2.1, so we've we've spent 50% of our budget, and trending exactly where we need to be, but there's not a lot of margin on on the sewer. Gas, obviously, Jeff and I are watching that on week by week basis, but I can tell you that the gas gas sales are going up because of the colder months, which we need, last year, the gas fund suffered really bad, but we're at 53% and 45% on the expenditures, and then lastly, on the landfill, we are tracking right along with expenditures and revenue just the same, so overall, on a six month mark, this is a great snapshot, great picture of of financial health for the city of Tifton, and I'm going to talk to you just about the budget calendar in just a minute, because we're headed headed there next.
Okay, this looks good, I I looked at, I looked at 10 numbers on all of that across there, you know, if you were 58%, then you want your revenue to be above that, well, every one of our revenues for all five of these, except for gas, and it's just below, we understand that, and then you are above that, and then if you look your your expenditure, you know, if you're at 55%, if you're 58% of the year, good, 34%, 53%, and you get to gas, and well, it's at 45, well, that's good too, because your revenue wasn't quite there, but as long as it's below that 58%, and then the landfill, 42% below the the 58, so maybe you can pick out those 10 numbers, and you can look at those things and say, boom, we're we're doing good.
Yeah, we're we are finalizing things, Dana and her staff are doing good, we talked about it earlier, there was a formula mixed up with our our P and Ls, so she fixed that today, and we're on target with the audit, so everything is 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 right where we need to be, as far as audit, we should get a hearing on where we are very, very soon, reconciliation statements, updates, so Dana and her staff are doing great work, so I'm excited to, I'm not excited, but I'm excited to get into the new budget season, so thank you for your work.
All right, any questions of Dana? Thank you, Dana, we really appreciate your work, very much so, thank you so much. All right, in our packet, we have the board report, and you know, we adopted our new policy of working with our boards to make recommendations for either appointments or reappointments, and you can see there that the Downtown Development Authority has recommended reappointing Hal Baxley, and that the Keep Tifton Beautiful has recommended appointing Victoria Heath as a new applicant, so I will open that up for a motion to some of that regarding either one of them or both of them.
We moved to reappoint both, oh, I'm sorry.
I was looking.
I was just going to say, I made the motion to reappoint both to the respective board.
Okay, so Hal Baxley to the Downtown Development Authority, and Victoria Heath to Keep Tifton Beautiful.
When when does Hal term end? What was the?
It should be December.
It ended December 31st?
Yeah, December 31st.
Okay, all right, so the motion, did you second, I'm sorry, did someone second?
I didn't know if he was answering.
Well, I was just asking when when did Hal, I tried to get the question in before he made the motion, but.
Oh, okay, sorry about that.
So I asked it anyway.
Sorry about that, okay, so second, I guess we have a motion and a second, all right, any further discussion or questions? All right, all of those in favor of appointing those two individuals, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all right, thank you, all right, city manager report.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, I mentioned the budget calendar, and I did pass a copy out to you, and Dana and I are ready to go with this, some of the dates that that are important, that you need to know, will, March 23rd, I'll be having budget meetings with the departments, and April 15th, we'll talk about the budget again with the directors, and then on May the 6th, it'll go to the Budget Finance Committee for review, so it'll go quick, but with our new format, and some of the things that we're already working on, it should be well in order, but we're excited to get this underway, so that was the first first thing I wanted to share with you, and then the second, with all the water, Jeff and ESG, we are working very, very hard, watching the system, what's called inflow, there's there's a lot of water in the pipes, and thank you, if you hear from any residents about any concerns, please get that to me or Jeff, so we could get out there and look at it, but we're watching some of the problem areas very closely, when the water, so much water coming off the ground, going into our storm drains and into the sewer, obviously, it it rises, and some of the tricky spots where the manholes are, we may see some what's called percolation, so we we're trying to keep that as a minimum, we may have pumps out in the street, but we're, again, we got to, we we have some areas that we're really watching close, I wanted to share share that with you, and then lastly, I wanted to play a video that we did receive word that we were re-designated for Plan First, which is a designation that we received, and this is Jessica's, she started this and did a great job, and we earned the designation, and Plan First is about comprehensive planning, and it's saying that we're doing what we say we're going to do in many areas, again, I won't go into details, but if you are designated a Plan First community, or re-designated like we are, we're able to do things like apply for CDBG every year, we're not limited by certain funding, we could we could apply, we have this designation that certainly helps us in the way of DCA and what we're trying to do as a community, so it is very distinctive, I would say, and it's a really big day for for Tifton to to get this re-designation, so Jessica, thank you for your help again, so I wanted to play this, obviously, this is our new our new way of congratulations and meeting, so Governor Kemp has a couple things to say, as does the DCA Commissioner, so Jonathan, if you'll play that.
Plan First is a program designed to reward communities for effectively creating and implementing their local comprehensive plans. Earning this distinction requires a strict adherence to a rigorous set of criteria to demonstrate the ability to manifest the vision of a community's future. The benefits of receiving Plan First distinction include, but are not limited to, statewide recognition, eligibility to apply for community development block rent funds annually, assistance from DCA staff for technical support, and much more. Since 2015, dozens of cities and counties around the state have been recognized. Today, we want to congratulate this year's designees. Jones County, City of Adele, City of Bainbridge, City of Cornelia, City of Perry, City of Sandy Springs, City of Thomasville, City of Tifton, City of Vienna, City of Woodstock. Here are some words of encouragement from both Governor Brian Kemp and Commissioner Christopher Nutt.
There's no single path to success. Those who obtain it do so in their own way by establishing and following through on a comprehensive plan that works best for them. That's what communities across Georgia have done time and time again. Plan First exists to celebrate them. We believe our cities and counties deserve recognition for their ability to strategize and make their local comprehensive plans a reality. These plans lay a solid foundation upon which local leaders can effectively build a better future for their communities. Projects such as infrastructure improvement, economic development, and so much more are made possible through years of tireless public service, cooperative effort, and a relentless commitment to hardworking Georgians, and it all begins with a good plan. So I hope you will join me in congratulating the cities and counties throughout the great state of Georgia, who have done what it takes to commit to the collaborative planning that makes community goals a reality. We are proud of our local communities, and we are proud of Plan First.
Greetings, on behalf of the Department of Community Affairs, it's my pleasure and honor to congratulate these 10 communities that are being recognized today as 2021 Plan First communities. The Plan First program is truly the linchpin of DCA's planning efforts. In 1989, the Georgia Legislature enacted the Planning Act, recognizing the importance and criticality to sound planning as we envision the future for our communities. DCA is pleased to recognize those communities who have truly stood out in their planning efforts, not only in their ability to plan, but also in your ability to execute. I am particularly proud of this program, and delighted today to recognize three new Plan First designees, along with our returning communities who are being re-designated. Bainbridge, Cornelia, Sandy Springs, we're delighted to welcome you to this program. The great things that are going on in Bainbridge, you know, in Decatur County, it's so exciting to to see the great work in your community, which I know are the fruits of great planning. Ebony Simpson, our, the the leader of this program, and I had the opportunity in early November to spend some time in Cornelia, and it's so great to see the fantastic fruits of your labor and your planning efforts. Sandy Springs, you're right here in our backyard in Atlanta, I have watched for the last 14 years, I guess beyond that, the work that has gone into envisioning a a fantastic community, and we are delighted to welcome you into this program. Similarly, to those of you who are being re-designated, Adele, Thomasville, Tifton, Vienna, Woodstock, Jones County, and my hometown of Perry, we can't thank you enough for the great work that you are doing in your communities to envision the future and to build to that future. I want to also offer a word of thanks to our team at DCA, led by Ebony Simpson, for the great work that they do in this program. Again, congratulations, I know that you will benefit from the technical assistance and all of the other, you know, benefits that come with this designation. Good luck, don't hesitate to call if ever we can be of assistance.
And we'll certainly use this as we move forward, that's all I have for tonight.
Okay, we are coming to a close, and before we close, we'll go through Mayor and Council comments, does anybody want to start? Does anyone want to volunteer to go first?
I'll go first.
Okay.
I'll be there, didn't say that. So.
I see you, Rob, I see you, you and Wes, don't look at each other, I know, I'll be quiet for once, I've already said enough tonight, but I'll tell you, be safe, wear your mask.
Okay, all right, thank you. Johnny, you want to go next? Okay, Wes?
I want to say thank you, guys, for all your thoughts and prayers, y'all know that I lost my grandmother this past week, and she was a very special lady, pretty much a lot of the people in Tifton knew her as Nana, but she she lived a great life for 92 years, and we're going to miss her, but I know she's in a better place with my grandfather, so thank y'all for your thoughts and prayers.
Okay.
Glad to be here again, Wes, do you have a birthday too? Okay, then, tell the people how to tell the people, I owe you getting a mask, no, just, no, but, no, just glad to be here.
Okay. So you can join me in the AD under A, kind of. Well, I had the opportunity last week to meet with our school superintendent, Adam Hathaway, and tour the, what will become the new administration office, which we all know is the old Annabelle Clark School on 12th Street, and I can tell you, the that facility is is state of the art, and it's going to be something this community can be very, very proud of, I'm very proud that they've, they are preserving the historic integrity of that building, it's in MJ's district, in the historic district, so they're preserving the historic integrity, however, it is, like I said, it is state of the art, it is really impressive, and Adam has assured us that we can, you know, that facility is is our community facility, and so if we need meeting space or things like that, he'll, he's certainly very receptive to that, but if you have the opportunity, they'll be finishing up, they're supposed to receive the keys sometime around the middle to end of March, so if you have the opportunity, I know they'll have a ribbon cutting and an open house and that kind of thing, but but do stop by, and they're very receptive to allowing you to walk through and take a look, it's, it is quite impressive, so really going to be a nice addition to our community, and I'm very proud of our school board for and administration for for that, preserving that building, because it's certainly a a gem in our community. Is there any other business to come before the council tonight?
We'll need to go to an executive session for legal matters.
We will?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I thought we were finished, but we're not, so if there's no further business, I'll take a motion to go into executive session for legal matters. Okay, so MJ, second by Wes, any further discussion, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, we'll take about a two minute break, and then we will be in executive.